Good evening, everyone. This September 2, 2025, meeting of the Lake Oswego City Council is now called to order. Ms. Ono, will you please call the roll?
Mayor Buck?
Here.
Councillors Corrigan?
Here.
Raff?
Here.
Afghan?
Here.
Mabup?
Yeah.
Winland?
Here.
Verdic?
Here.
Thank you. It's nice to have everyone here, the families back together. Now, everyone, will you please stand, remove your hats, and join us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Well, September in the city of Lake Oswego is now, well, in our nation, it is National Preparedness Month. But here in Lake Oswego, we recognize that as well. And the city council would like to help raise awareness of the importance of the role that all community members and neighbors play to minimize the impacts of disasters by taking steps to develop emergency plans, assemble disaster kits, and stay informed about local hazards. We strengthen our city's resilience and create a safer community by working together. This month of September is National Preparedness Month, and we invite all neighbors to join us at the Emergency Preparedness Fair, which will take place right here at City Hall on Thursday, September 18, from 5:30 to 7:30 p.m. We will be signing a proclamation for National Preparedness Month, and I do invite you all to come to the fair. If you haven't been there, there's lots of good resources and even some supplies that you get for free. So it's great. Okay. Now is the time on our agenda for public comment. If you'd like to provide public comment and haven't already done so, please fill out one of these white forms and hand it to Ms. Ono. But Edward Conrad, you are up first. Just as a reminder, as Mr. Conrad is coming forward, there's three minutes for public comment, and there's a little timer on the table in front of you, and we appreciate, you know, paying attention. Good to have you all here. Oh, let's make sure your microphone is on real quick.
To look like.
There we go.
There we go.
Okay.
My name's Edward Conrad, and I've lived in most of Lake Oswego for more than 40 years, and I appreciate the opportunity to commit to address this busy and really dedicated city council. If you've been around Lake Oswego for the past few years, you can't help but notice more e-bikes and e-scooters on arterial sidewalks. These vehicles are not supposed to be on sidewalks, but there is often no safe alternative. I can relate to this understandable danger avoidance because I often use an e-bike to do errands in town. When I consider using an arterial street to pass between neighborhoods, I have to ask myself the dirty, hairy question, are you feeling lucky, punk? I often back down and choose a complex path on low-speed streets to avoid arterial paths. Is my fear justified? Well, to answer this question, I measured the stock of sidewalks and bike lanes on the major, three major arterial streets in Lake Oswego. Using a bike, shoes, and measuring tape, low-tech, I looked at both sides of three major arterioles in Lake Oswego. And I'll bet the city has done a similar inventory or will in the future, and I encourage because they have better resources, better machines, better knowledge. But anyway, I surveyed A Avenue from, to Country Club, Cruzway to Bangy Road, and Boone's Ferry from Kirk Parkway to Gene Road. And what I found, when there was a bike lane, most were about five feet wide. National and local agencies now suggest six feet with an added buffer. A transportation project can go down to five-feet bike paths if ODOT signs off a noncompliance document. And I, in the future, I'd like to find some of the noncompliance documents here. But the difference between five-feet and six-feet bike lanes is a 40% risk of death. Over these 11.6 miles, noncompliance with standards was worse than I expected. There is 49% noncompliance with ADA sidewalk standards. If I used the six-foot standard, there was a 79% noncompliance. Only 20% or so were in compliance. If I used a five-foot width, which is the standard here anyway, it improves to about 35% still noncompliance. So I concluded that my fear of riding an e-bike in Lake Oswego major arterioles is justified. And I'd encourage the city, even though I think the Transportation Advisory Board, and I'm out of the loop here, is no longer meets, but I encourage the city and staff to look at, in the future, it has to be in the future, to correct some of these dramatic deficiencies and prepare for a future which has more safe pedestrian and bicycle paths that will help, do a lot of things, help improve safety and help businesses save money. So in the future, I hope bike riders don't have to ask the question I have, are you feeling lucky today, punk?
Thank you, Dr. Conrad. We appreciate your comment and your analysis. Thank you. Chris Turkey, you're next.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councillors, city manager, staff. I'm Chris Turkey. I live at 2356 Glen Haven Road in Lake Oswego. I'm speaking as the chair of the Palisades Neighborhood Association, and I'm speaking on behalf of our support for reducing the speed limit to 20 miles an hour. One of the aspects of our wonderful town that I love is the sense of community, neighbors who are also good friends doing life together. Lake Oswego had 51 national night-out parties. Wow. Kudos to all the city's staff, Bonnie Hirschberger, Battalion Chief Greg Barnum, and so many others who made this night a home run. And if I may brag, eight of those parties were in Palisades. One of the cherished characteristics of my neighborhood is folks walking with friends, with children, with their dog, or just their thoughts. This contributes so much to building a sense of community, a cohesive and safe community. But safe communities need safe streets. A challenge in our town was so many narrow streets, many without sidewalks. Tonight, you'll be making your decision on whether or not to proceed with your goal of reducing the speed limit on local streets and residential collectors to 20 miles an hour. The Palisades Neighborhood Association Board discussed this issue at some length at our August board meeting and voted unanimously to support the city's plan to reduce the local speed limits to 20 miles an hour. Of course, discussion included questions of enforcement, cost, questions like, will the new speed limits just be ignored? These are aspects of your plan that we know the traffic engineering staff and LOPD enforcement folks have thoroughly considered. One question, one thought did resonate with our board that I want to pass on. Perhaps streets without sidewalks should be the first priority for reduced speed. So you have the full and enthusiastic support of the Palisades Neighborhood Association to reduce the speed limit on local roads to 20 miles an hour, and we're ready to help roll out this program in any way that we can. I urge you to vote in favor of reducing the speed limits to 20 miles an hour. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turkey. Appreciate your comments. Mike Perlm?
Good evening. Hello, council. First of all, I want to thank you for the Go Slow campaign. Lowering speed limits is a good first step to increase the safety of our neighborhood streets, but it is still just the first step. Our neighborhoods today are not vibrant. Rarely do I see kids playing outside or people spending time outside of their house. Instead, our streets are dedicated to and dominated by cars, both parking and moving. We planned our city 50 to 75 years ago to be suburban neighborhoods, full of single-family homes, connected by streets for cars, and this is the result of that decision. Every day now, our streets are flooded with cars that pick up and drop off. Our farmer's market and our downtown are full of parked cars and traffic because we've embedded car dependency deep into the land use rules for this city. The Go Slow effort is a great first step, but I would encourage the council and the planning department to keep pushing. What are the next dozen steps we can take to peel back this car dependency, to make our streets and neighborhoods more vibrant for people? Why do the majority of parents drive their kids to school? Why do I have to drive downtown to get a cup of coffee or to eat at a café? Why can't I do any of this in my own neighborhood? Can we use our neighborhood's street space for better purposes than car storage and movement? Here's my request. Please keep taking more steps to make our neighborhoods safer and more vibrant for all residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perlm. Good to see you. Kate Leptin?
Good evening. Hi, my name is Kate Leptin. Thank you for having me this evening. It's great to see you all. I am a new director on the Lake Oswego School Board, and I come here not as a school board member, but as a parent. Today was the first day of school for my son, James, and I was so excited for him. He's, he just turned four, and he goes to River Grove, and he is the cutest kid. He's so smart, and he also has trouble running away, unfortunately. My oldest child didn't have this problem, so I didn't really understand what was happening. But unfortunately, it's become a pattern where he just likes to run into streets. But he runs into danger, unfortunately, and we don't know exactly why. The only thing he's been diagnosed with is sensory sensitivity disorder, and so maybe there'll be other things that come along, but he has a tough time following directions and staying safe. And so I had a scare today, unfortunately. I was really excited after a long summer to have him go into the public pre-K program at River Grove, and he's got a great teacher. And I had prepped everyone just so they knew, you know, James's can be a little wild, but he's a good kid. And he, I got a call at 1 o'clock today and said, please come quickly. Your son ran, at recess, he ran through the doors of the front, front doors of the school and got out. So the secretary saw, immediately called me, and the principal had to chase him. He's a fast kid, so he ran all the way down McEwen to Pilkington, and fortunately, his principal was able to stop him at Pilkington and then got some support, and I was there within about two or three minutes. So everything was fine. He was totally safe. But when I think about making our city safer for pedestrians, I feel like there's been so much that's already been done, and I'm so grateful for all of the new sidewalks and pathways and the initiatives that are happening because they make a huge difference. The speed limit being lowered by five, in my case, would make a huge difference for my son, James. I think he's getting close to the age where he is going to be able to have a lot more self-control going forward, and I'm already starting to see it. But in times when he gets overwhelmed, as he did today at school, his first day at public school here in Lake Oswego, he unfortunately tries to run away to get away from whatever is overwhelming him. So I had a scary day, but I'm, I was so happy to come here this afternoon and just say thank you for considering lowering the speed limit on our city's streets because it makes a big difference for kids, and it's not just about whether the parent is keeping track of their kid. Because I know my daughter Amelia doesn't run in the street, and neither does my third daughter Sophie. It's really just my son, James. And he's getting better, but lowering the speed limit will really help him out. So thank you for considering.
Thanks, Director Leptin. We're glad that he's okay.
Yeah, me too.
Ginny Adelsheim?
Good evening, ma'am.
Hi.
Hi. Good to see you.
Thank you for letting me come and speak to you. Just let me find my little statement here. If I can find it. Okay, here we go. My name is Ginny Adelsheim. I've lived at the corner of Cornell and Hemlock Street for 20 years. I am here to voice my concern about the very dangerous intersection I live on. Even though there is a stop sign on Hemlock Street, there is no stop sign, slow sign, speed bump, or even a warning sign on Cornell Street, that the intersection is a pedestrian and a pet crossing. Hemlock Street has the most pedestrians of any street across Cornell because it connects Halenan School, Free Ponds Park, and New Seasons Market. Because I live on the corner of Cornell and Hemlock, I see what happens there every day. Many kids ride electric bikes and scooters now. Often, they zip across Cornell without even stopping. People push babies in strollers and pull them in small wagons. Countless people walk their dogs, and many elderly folks walk along Hemlock. Because drivers on Cornell have no reason to slow down, they often race through the Hemlock intersection. I've heard parents shout to their kids, run, when they get to Cornell Street. One little girl froze in the middle of Cornell intersection as a car appeared, and her dad had to run and rescue her. I've heard many parents explain to their kids the need to stop and look before crossing. But the view up Cornell Street is obstructed by a curve, so you don't actually see the car until it's quite closed. That is a big problem because older folks and young kids take a lot longer to get across the street. Many times, cars have to suddenly slow down when someone is in the process of crossing Cornell. On August 23, a young boy on his bike couldn't see a car coming down Cornell and started to cross the intersection. He ran into the car. Thankfully, he was not seriously injured, but I imagine he was traumatized. I imagine the driver was too. My daughter was the first responder because she was on that corner of my property gardening at the time and saw the accident. She ran into the street to help him and got the bike off of him. She stayed in the street and comforted him until the emergency people came. One of the police officers said it should be a four-way stop. The only way to avoid this kind of accident is to have a stop sign on Cornell Street, not just Hemlock. The onus should not be on pedestrians, especially children, to protect themselves from oncoming cars and trucks that have the freedom to zoom up and down Cornell Street without even slowing, let alone stopping on Hemlock. For over 20 years, this problem has plagued our street. I am begging the city to make the Cornell-Hemlock intersection a four-way stop before there is a serious or fatal accident. Thank you so much for giving me this time to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Adelsheim. Appreciate you coming. And then on Zoom, we have Sarah Iannarone. Ms. Iannarone?
Hello.
Hi.
I'm councillor. Thank you for having me here today. I appreciate the opportunity to testify, and thank you for making Zoom available. It's quite hot out there right now, so you saved me a little bit of sweat. I am Sarah Iannarone. I'm the executive director of the Street Trust, and I am here this evening to urge your support for ordinance 2966, establishing citywide speed limit reductions, 20 is plenty program in Lake Oswego. The Street Trust is a membership advocacy organization. We represent all street users regardless of how they get around across the Portland metro region. We have just around 400 members and supporters who reside in Lake Oswego who are members and involved in our organization. We work hard to break the political gridlock and win the types of investments that you've heard your community wants tonight, saving lives, reducing barriers, making sure our young people can get to school. We also serve at many tables in cooperation with Lake Oswego at Metro and beyond. So we're excited to be here tonight and congratulate you on exploring the groundbreaking initiative of 20 is plenty. As you know, lowering speed limits to 20 miles per hour is not just about safety, but this is an economic investment in your community. Studies across the United States have shown that walking, biking, and transit infrastructure projects create significantly more jobs per dollar than when we just build car-only projects. When we calm traffic, we increase foot traffic, which strengthens your local businesses. People visiting your retail shops by foot and by bike are more likely to stop. They stop more frequently, they linger, and they spend money in places where they feel safe crossing the street or even letting their children walk. We save money by preventing crashes. Every avoided crash saves thousands of dollars in emergency response, healthcare, and property damage. Cities that have lowered their neighborhood speeds saw reduction in crashes of up to 40%, which translated into millions of dollars in avoided costs, not just, you know, at the public level, but the household burden of these crashes, not only in lost wages, but mountains of medical debt, as you know. So any amount that we can reduce speeds on our local roads helps increase the amount that someone who is unfortunately involved in a crash, they can survive. It's a generally all-around a positive thing that you can do in your community. And they do help support economic resilience at a time right now when we know that household costs are rising. We're talking about even increasing the gas tax at the state level. Families can save on transportation costs when they feel safe walking or biking instead of relying on a car for every trip. That means there's more disposable income circulating back into your economy in less time wasted in costly congestion, especially around school drop-off and pick-off, pick-up when congestion can be very bad. These points are explained in greater detail in the December 8, 2023 technical advisory memo, which we submitted to your city. I did try to resend it again today. I encountered a glitch with the email, but I'll work with Ms. Ono to make sure that gets over to you. We want to make sure that everybody using your sidewalks experiences fewer close calls, that children biking to school can gain confidence, and that your whole city is prospering. And the small change, while it may seem like change, if reducing speeds from 25 to 20 on your neighborhood streets can pay off in huge ways for safety, livability, and prosperity. So we thank you for your leadership and considering this important investment in your community. We're happy to support you, any initiatives in helping educate the community. And a shameless plug, if I may, for the first person who testified, the Street Trust is also host to the Oregon Micromobility Network, which you can find at oreganmicromobility.org. And we are working on making sure we have safe, enforceable policies for people e-biking and using e-scooters, and we've been working in the state legislature to pass that legislation so that we have safe, enforceable micromobility for everyone. So I encourage him to go find out more about there because we want people of all ages and abilities rolling, whether it's analog or powered with a little battery pack. We're happy for both. So thanks again for hearing our testimony tonight. Congratulations on this groundbreaking initiative, and we appreciate your time.
Thank you, Ms. Iannarone. We appreciate you being here. Thanks for your comments. Is there anyone else who would like to provide public comment? Okay. Then next, we're going to, thank you to everyone who did. And next, we're moving on to the consent agenda. I've removed one item from the consented agenda, Resolution 2996, item 6.5. That's, that's the, the Speed Zone Ordinance. And, but what we have remaining on the consent agenda, Resolution 25-31. This appoints members to the Foothills District Community Advisory Committee. Ordinance 2958, which is annexing 5450 Kenny Street. Ordinance 2961, which is annexing 6210 Lakeview Boulevard. Resolution 25-38, this approves Amendment Number Four to the subrecipient agreement 24-006 between the city of Lake Oswego and Clark County Human Services Department, Social Services Division for fiscal years 2023 through 2027. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Move to adopt the consent agenda.
Motion made by councillor Raff and
Second.
Seconded by councillor Umbo. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion passes 7-0. Resolution, item 6.1, Resolution 2996, we'll consider separately. At our, the last meeting, the council had a discussion and a public hearing on this, on this ordinance, but councillor Raff and councillor Umbo, neither one of you are here. And councillor Raff, you asked for this to be pulled off the agenda, so we'll let you speak to it.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I think over the last several, gosh, three weeks since our, that last meeting that I wasn't here before, I have received, I'm assuming we all received, a lot of emails from constituents within Lake Oswego, both for and against the initiative. And I just felt that considering this seems to be a little more divisive than we, I mean, not divisive is not the right word, but maybe just so many arguments for and against, I thought it'd be better for us to kind of revisit this in a more formal manner and give people the time to come and speak for, against the issue. So I thought it'd be better just to take it out of the consent agenda. So I appreciate you doing that.
Would you like to say anything else? We had the, oh, okay. Well, I don't know. This would be, because we're going to, we'll make a motion, and, but we had the public hearing the last meeting.
Yeah, okay. Look, I think my personal opinion is that on the surface, 20 is plenty seems like a no-brainer. And Mayor and I discussed this, probably over a year ago, we've been talking about this, right? And, and as a father of young kids, I totally understand and, and I see how this can benefit the community. On the other hand, as I've heard from many other people who have emailed me, they have raised some, raised some things and points of view that I didn't consider first, which is it doesn't make a lot of sense for us to create ordinances that we can't police. I think that's something we need to think about. And also, I think we just went through a budget cycle where we were literally trying to pinch pennies and put pennies together to fund certain other projects. And so is this the right time to spend an additional $200,000 when there are other things we could spend that the city needs to spend its money on? So I just think there, I think it's hard for me to say one way or the other, what I, what I, because I see the benefits of both sides, but I'm sort of leaning now towards not the right time to do this when we could probably spend the money in more, constructive is not the right word, but better uses. So. Thank you, councillor Raff.
Yeah.
Councillor Umbo?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And yeah, I, I've received many peoples from supporting us, as not supporting. And among the folks, folks are talking about, like, do you have data? Here, there are data and evidence that show that, and you don't even need their stuff that it's more rhetorical than, you know, any sense. Is it, does it make sense that if someone is hit by a car going 25, is it worse than when they're hit by a car going 20? So the answer is, is simple. We don't need, the data is there. And in spite of that, their data, if you go to Europe, that I know more and as cities, it's 30 mile, 30 kilometers in all neighborhood. No one is going more, and 30 kilo is even less than 20 miles. 20 miles is 32 kilometers. So we, we should go 20 mile. That's what is normal everywhere in the world. That's where, in all neighborhood, is 20, is 20 kilometers, 30 kilometers at the most. So some even say 20 kilometers, which is less than the 20 miles. So that's, you know, I respect everybody's opinion, of course, but in terms of safety, this is what we should do. I work with children. For me, anything that is safety is safety. And also, it's safe for our elderly folks. It's safe for people walking, for people biking. I just were in, in Amsterdam. There's like even the roundabout, they made it that you can bike around. So it's now a trend that people should bike, people should walk. The car civilization is, there's an alternative to that, especially when we're in our neighborhoods. We should walk. People talk about $200,000. $200,000 is nothing compared to the safety of our population. We are putting $200,000 to other things. We are putting $200,000 to other things that are not necessary, and we can name them. We can name them. There are many things. It all, what I, the, the thing that I always try to figure out is why people, when they against something, they're using budget responsibility. But when it's things that they care about, they don't say that. Like the lake, many people want it as to continue for millions of dollars, but no one among those said, hey, this is a lot of money. Even putting a guard over there on the summer, it's money, but no one questioned those as budget. But when it comes to the safety of our people, some people find that $200,000 is a lot. Come on, folks, we have some time to see what we want and what is like normal. What is normal is we care about our population. That's why we are elected. Someone say, oh, if you voted, I won't vote for you. Good. Not many people didn't vote for us, and we are not here for people who vote for us or who didn't vote for us. We are here to make our community safer. Like my council friend said, the blue zone. When we want Lake Oswego to be a blue zone, it's a place where people walk. I was checking even the data. Go to ChatGPT, which is not funny, like guys. No, no, I love ChatGPT. Go ask them if their data, ask them if going 25 and 20, the five, the five miles, the fatality is higher. And I was also shocked when they say our police don't like it. Who said that? When did our police said they don't want us to make our street safe? So folks, let all vote for that. Speed 20 is plenty. And as it is said, 20 is plenty in a neighborhood. It's 32 kilometers. It's a lot. And anyway, people, when you say 25, they go 30. So folks who say they want 25, they're gonna have it because they're gonna go 25. I bet you that. So this is it, you know? I mean, honestly, someone should make a motion, we vote, and we move on, and we, it's a good service to our population. And thanks for everyone, those who pitch in, that citizenry. You say what you want, you, you know, we respect that, but, you know, we're here also to work for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Boob. Councilor Afghan?
Mr. Mayor, this is my first time being on the city council, and a consent agenda is pulled. Procedurally, what are we supposed to do so I can?
We should make a motion.
You can, you can make a motion.
Make a motion.
Okay. Before, can I talk about it, just like?
Yes, you can, yes. Doesn't matter.
Don't you make a motion.
Here's
Just please say, say your piece.
I can do either or.
Go ahead.
Okay. I have been looking at all of these data as prior to the previous meeting that we voted for plenty is enough, or plenty is. I, I can take those data apart without any questions. If I go deep enough, I can dismiss all of these data. At the same time, if the Federal Transportation Agency, if the National Transportation Agency, if City of Portland, who has looked at 26 neighborhoods and has 214,000 points, that they say this makes a difference, I think we should consider that. That's one point. The other point is, our city was not built with sidewalks everywhere, and we're trying to do that, and it's going to take the next 30 years before we have sidewalk all over the place. The 25 miles an hour is safe if there are sidewalks, if there are wide enough street for e-bikes and regular bike, but we don't have that. So I live in Old Town, and I experienced this when I was walking in the area without the sidewalk, and a CSO, police, community police officer, who went by me at 25 miles an hour, it scared the Gs out of me. It's like, this is too fast with a big SUV going right by me. And if we're trying to promote walking, a city that you can walk, if we're promoting, use your bicycles, if we have kids who are going to use e-bikes, e-bikes are here to stay, then we must consider this seriously, whether it's 200,000 or, 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 or. So I move.
Oh.
Nope. Okay.
Go ahead.
Move to adopt the resolution for
Ordinance.
Ordinance.
Enact.
Enact, okay?
Enact.
Everybody help me.
2966.
Ordinance 2966. Thank you.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Councilor Afghan, seconded by Councilor Verdict. Discussion, Councilor Wedlund. Then thank you, Councilor Afghan.
Well, I did not support this before, and I'm still not going to support this, and I just want to tell you why. I think a couple of things that I found out from the number of emails that I received is that we put this in August recess, and then we're doing it right after Labor Day. And I think when I look at all the processes that we go through as a city for almost everything, a picnic shelter up at the new park at receipt, we had three or four focus groups, we had inputs, we had all kinds of outreach. And I would say that while the conclusion may be that people have already made their minds up, I would say that we didn't have the type of process that we typically go through when we make a major change in policy, which is going to affect all of our residents. So I'm disappointed in that. The second thing that I wanted to say is that I really feel that we are putting a policy in, that we don't have the resources or a plan to enforce it, to make it happen, to, it sounds good. I agree with all your, your statements. I think it's interesting. We've looked at this as a city with real data, real traffic data from Lake Oswego. Not national studies, not local studies, but real data from Lake Oswego. And when the Transportation Advisory Board studied it for four years and, and could not come up with a recommendation to move forward because there was no accidents and no issues in the streets that we were talking about, the accidents and injuries really happen at major intersections, major thoroughfares. And I feel like we're going to give a false sense of security to our citizens because we don't have a plan to enforce it. We don't have any more budget in place. We've heard that. So there's not going to be any more enforcement from a traffic standpoint of view. I think education is great, but I have to look at human behavior, and you hear something. It's kind of like when there's a disaster or something happens, everyone goes and gets their emergency preparedness kits, and then six weeks or six months or a year later, people forget about it. And I, I just don't want to give the community a false sense that all of a sudden, everyone's going to be going 20 miles an hour. I think I would rather have a plan and a way that we're going to actually behaviorally and realistically change people to go to 20 miles an hour. And I, I just don't, I don't see that happening. So those are my main concerns. I also think $200,000, from what I've gotten feedback from a lot of people in the emails, feel that it could go to something more productive like speed bumps that would actually be a, a way that might slow things down, or more stop signs, or more lines, different things that can, we can do from a traffic standpoint of view to maybe solve some of these issues that are in the intersections. So that's my feedback. And I, I think it's unwise to just rely on, I mean, I don't know who this lady was that she brought in for the testimony, but she talked in generalalities, didn't speak really specifics with changes from 25 to 20. You can always say that when you reduce speed limits, traffic statistics and accidents go down, but that could be from a 50 mile an hour to a 45 mile an hour or a 35 mile an hour. I'd like to have more statistics. From my understanding, the real data from Portland is that the effect of 20 is plenty reduced speed limits by one, one mile an hour after they did the post-studies. So I'm just saying, those are the facts that we have. It's not just lots of words, it's, it's statistics. And so that's what I worry about. So.
Thank you, Councilor Wedlund. And Councilor Verdict?
Well, as I stated before, I fully support this change. We might not get more enforcement because we don't have the police to do it, but I don't think we're going to have less than what we have now. So I, I don't buy that argument. I think it's weak. I think speed bumps, I know when I look at them, people will slow down for the speed bump, and then they hit the gas between the speed bumps and they go faster. So yes, that's an option in some areas, it works, but again, it's not a solution. And I don't think any one of us up here is saying that this is the end-all, be-all solution. What we're saying is this is one of the tools that we have in our toolkit that we can put in place to try to encourage pedestrian uses of our streets, whether that's walking, whether it's riding your bicycle or scooter or whatnot. And one of our goals that we've had since I've been on council is all about pedestrian safety. So again, and we focus kind of on the pathways part of that safety. But I think the underlying tone is we want our streets to be safer. We want more people to go out to, you know, u- use their feet, use their legs, actually like physically move. Well, we're not going to get that unless the pedestrians feel safer. And okay, maybe, you know, the traffic studies all read things, but the traffic studies aren't looking at how does this impact and how does it make the pedestrian feel? That is a different type of study. And to Councilor Boob stating, you know, the average residential speed in other countries being 30 kilometers an hour. I know military bases, the residential speed on military bases is 15 miles per hour. I, you know, it, this just is common sense. The other thing with this is we're going to get more signs. So we're going to get more points that remind people what that speed limit is. Because too frequently, I think all of us can probably have it happen, that you're driving down the road and all of a sudden, you're like, oh, jeez, I need to slow down. Well, we're going to have some of those reminders because we're going to have that many more signs up. So I think that's also something to keep in mind. And to the point that Councilor Corrigan made in our last meeting, we're only going to have more and more people come to and live in Lake Oswego as we get more dense. So again, let's act now. It's only going to be, everything's just getting more and more expensive. So waiting is just going to increase the, the cost to get more signs up and to do some awareness around it. So let's just rip the Band-Aid, let's move forward and do this for something that benefits the entire community. When we do pathways, that is great for one small portion, and the amount of pathway that we're going to get for this much money, I, what are we talking, 100, 200 feet at best?
Couple squares.
You know, we're not, yeah, a couple squares, you know? So this is something that really helps anyone who lives or walks on a residential street. So I am fully supportive of this. I think we had, we've had this as a council goal now for over a year, year and a half, I believe. We've had different groups speak on it. We've talked about it in March, we talked about it in July, and then we're talking about it again tonight, you know, per the request of Councilor Raff, which I think made a lot of sense to, to bring it back out so we could share once again. So I fully support this. I don't see that there's any data saying why we shouldn't do it. Nothing says it makes things worse. So let's not make things worse. Let's make things better.
Thank you, Council Verdict. Councilor Corrigan?
Well, I think, I think that the objection that we're hearing is financial, spending a lot of the emails that we receive, that all at once. So I, I think that that is, that to me is not a compelling argument. I'd like to ask all those people, do they really know how much a pathway costs? The pathway that we're proposing to build from Upper Drive down Bryant is going to be two and a half million dollars. Do they understand what one year of a Lake Oswego police officer costs? Just one year is pretty close to what we're going to need to spend on these signs. That would only be one year. The other thing that I, that I'm not sure that everybody really understands, and maybe this will help, if you can imagine yourself driving down your street at the speed limit and watching an Amazon van pull away in front of you. We have a lot more traffic on our streets than we did just because of the way our commerce has changed. And all of these things aren't really in the calculation as we think about the, the financial impact. And then you have to go back and say, gee, that's money, what's a life worth? You just, to me, that's really difficult, really difficult thing to, to make, to equivocate or whatever the word is. And the other thing that I think has kind of been lost, we've had a lot of discussion about this over the last, you know, this meeting and the last meeting, but there is an opportunity cost here that we're not taking, really not taking into account of, of what could happen if people felt comfortable walking. And I know that I would love to be able to go up South Shore, South Shore, run up South Shore. It's terrifying. Some of our pathways aren't even, we have traffic that moves so fast. I don't suppose, I don't think South Shore is going to come down on this. I don't know if it's not. But you can be really intimidated by fast traffic. I am, and I go out, I run, I walk. I think that the potential that this presents to us is worth pursuing. And I'm sorry that it's going to cost almost $200,000, but I think it's a bargain for opening up our community and for pedestrian safety. So I fully support this.
Thanks, Councilor Corrigan. Yeah, it's, I real, I, I agree with you. I don't think there's, there's nothing else that we can do that would, for this amount of money, that would have the same citywide impact. You know, it's rather profound, actually, you know, that for a, a couple hundred thousand dollars or less, you know, we can have an impact in every neighborhood throughout the city. And I got to thinking, you know, earlier today, just about like, well, how did, why were the streets 25 to begin with? How did we come up? We talked a lot about where's the data. It's like, well, actually, 2020 is the first time that we're actually using data to come up with a number that's appropriate for the residential context. 25 miles an hour, that was just some round number that was based on the mobility of cars and control, not safety at all, that originated 70-plus years ago. Is that really what we think we want to use as a context for today's, you know, our community of today, where people want to be out? We designed, you know, Mr. Perrin was here earlier, you know, we designed this whole community like all other suburban communities with no sidewalks, because people thought that was a great idea, too. Obviously nowadays, we think, well, no, that's not a good idea. And we all are on board with investing in, in those things. So I do think what we have right now is just, is based on outdated thinking and thinking that prioritized moving cars really over everything else. And that really no longer represents the prevailing sentiments of our community, the safety of, of the residents and the type of healthy, you know, connected community that we, we, we strive to be. Just 20 miles per hour, it is, it is rooted in science, and it's based on modern safety and survivability data, just not what looked, you know, reasonable many, many decades ago. And it's not just symbolic, as we know that the survivability data at 20 miles an hour is profoundly different. So even these small changes, even if it's a mile or two miles an hour, that is a, a small amount of speed, is a small amount. It's not going to change the amount of your, your trip time all that much, but when it comes to survivability, it's huge. It is huge, even just one or two miles an hour. So even if that, and I, we heard of two, two near misses, you know, in public comment tonight, and you think of just those seconds, and even if, you know, that, that one or two, you hate to, you know, tell those parents, well, gosh, you know, we just wanted to prioritize the convenience of drivers who arbitrarily want to just go a little bit faster. I mean, it's just making sense, so. But I really do appreciate all the engagement, you know, the comments from the council and, of course, all the people who took the time to write in. It is a big, you know, it is a big issue, and it will be noticed. I think that's the point. We want it to be big and to put that message out there with the additional signs that these are residential neighborhoods. People are out. It's a nice reminder, and I agree, I catch myself, too, in, on streets, and you're like, oh, because we have lots of streets with houses. And, but some roads are designed to be more like thoroughfares. I mean, even country I mean, even Country Club has houses, you know, on it, Boons Ferry has houses on it. So, it does help to orient people to the environment that they're in and to know just to, to be careful, to drive a little bit slower and to, to watch for, for vulnerable road users, so. With that, we have the motion made and seconded. Now, let's go ahead and call the roll. Ms. Ono, please.
Mayor Buck?
Yes.
Counselors Corrigan?
Yes.
Raff?
No.
Afghan?
Yes.
Mboop?
Yes.
Wenzel?
No.
Verdic?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-2.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Thanks, Ms. Ono. Okay, we are now going to move into our, we have two study sessions tonight. The first, item 8.1, is a wildfire response and disaster preparedness. Going to invite Battalion Chief Barnum for it. And he has a couple of guests from Clackamas County. And Battalion Chief, we'll have you introduce our guests here. Good evening. Let's make sure, is that microphone on? No, no.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, there we go.
Oh, perfect. So, Mayor, Counselors, City Manager and staff and all those who are attending, thank you for having us. My name is Greg Barnum. I'm a Battalion Chief here at this wonderful city of the Fire Department. Tonight, I have Emily Merklin and also Jamie Poole from the Clackamas County Emergency Management. They have a presentation that they would like to do about evacuations and the safety of their city.
Yep, thank you so much. Jamie Poole, I'm the Deputy Disaster Manager with Clackamas County. Want to just appreciate the Fire Department here for inviting us and really have been handed over to Emily to go over the presentation.
Can you hear me? Perfect, okay, awesome. Hi, Emily Merklin. I'm one of the community planners with the Disaster Management Program at Clackamas County. I'm here to provide some updates on our evacuation planning that we've been doing over the last couple of years. So I'll give some background first on why we've been working on evacuation planning throughout the county. Some of the recent events over the last five years, y'all can remember back to the 2020 wildfires, which was also in the midst of COVID. We really saw a need for refining our evacuation routes and thinking more about pre-planning for evacuation when it comes time because we know that evacuations do happen. We embarked on a multi-year project back in 2023 to address evacuation planning and meet the needs of the county. We really divided this project up into three phases, beginning with evacuation mapping, refinement of those maps, and then a public education campaign to highlight those maps that actually is wrapping up right now. We considered lots of different hazards as we planned out our maps, and I'll talk a little bit more about that. But I just want to appreciate the, the community and stakeholders that engaged in this process, not only to come up with the maps, but refine them and then push out the messaging through their communities. So, what you're seeing in front of you are the 21 evacuation zones that we created along with the evacuation map. You'll see the lines in red here. This was a part of the first phase of the project, starting in 2023. We did a risk, GIS risk-based inventory. So we consider things like floods, wildfires, landslides, and how those might impact roadways. And then came up with our evacuation zones and routes based on that information. In the second phase of the project, we refined these maps with our partners, like the Fire Department here, along with local staff throughout the county. And we engaged with those partners to learn more about how their local roadways work, how they think evacuations might work, both in practice and in theory. And reached out to some community groups to get their input on these maps. In the third phase of the project, we focused on community engagement. And we will do, I'll, I'll talk more about the communications campaign that we're wrapping up right now. But we sought engagement from all kinds of folks through focus groups, surveys, one-on-one interviews. And then we created a campaign after that. So what you're seeing in front of you is the timeline of those activities from this last spring leading into summer. This three-pronged approach really gave us a view into different community members' concerns about evacuation and, and the kinds of things they were thinking about. I'd like to spend a minute here to talk a bit more about these three approaches that we took. So for focus groups, we focused on the rural areas of the county that have fewer evacuation routes. We've seen in real life, especially with wildfires, that rural parts of the county have fewer ways to get out and they have different concerns than our urban areas. So we completed six focus groups. Thirty-two of the folks who were in those focus groups spoke Spanish and those were conducted in Spanish. It was important to us that we had an equitable approach to those focus groups and gave people a chance to share in their native language. In the public survey portion of our outreach, we had 920 survey responses in total, which is fantastic. And 45 of those were in Spanish. It was available to anybody who was living in the county. Businesses and folks working in the county were excluded, but anybody who resides here could take it. And then finally, in these one-on-one meetings, we had nine in total. These are with community members and community leaders, five of those in English, four in Spanish. And we selected those through our, our network of connections throughout the county. So from all of this, we gathered up all the information about what the community told us and considered how we might roll out a public education campaign that highlights the maps we worked on with our stakeholders in previous phases and then also considers how the community wants to be communicated with, what their concerns are, what they think the county is responsible for versus what they feel is personal responsibility when it comes to evacuation. We learned about their, you know, preferred communication channels when it comes to evacuation, where they're seeking their news, what kind of messages resonate for them and what obstacles they might have in preparing for disasters. So we came up with this campaign called Be Clack Go Prepared. You'll see some of the images here on the right-hand side. These are just a few of the social media posts that have gone out over the last 10 weeks. And then the three simple steps are on the left-hand side. So the first one being sign up for public alerts. We push out this messaging all the time. In fact, I think there are public alert postcards on your back table right now. It's a key way that we message and Clackamas County is responsible for sending out those messages when there's something going on to keep people aware. It's a very simple sign-up process. And in our community outreach, we found that most people were signed up, although they wanted to double-check and wanted to make sure that they were in the know. So we pushed out that existing messaging through this campaign. The second is this mapping piece. So for the first time, we released those maps that you saw, specifically the ones with the red lines and the evacuation routes out to the community in PDF form on our website. So people could download those and print them, become more familiar with their neighborhood. And if their neighborhood wasn't highlighted, we invited them to search their address on an interactive incident map that we host on our website all the time. The third piece, building your Clack Go kit. I think it was mentioned earlier, those preparedness buckets or preparedness backpacks. We all know those are important, but sometimes people feel like it's daunting or overwhelming to put those together. And so we created a very simple checklist that was really just a combination of checklists that already exist from Red Cross and other partners, made it in a very digestible format, and again, host those on our website for folks to, to print and prepare. The idea being that with these three actions, people could be Clack Go prepared and feel a little bit better about being prepared if there was an evacuation in their neighborhood. Again, all of this, just kind of pulling together what we learned from our community members and summarizing it in a digestible format. I'm proud to say that we had 2.4 million impressions from all of our social media work. I will say, we did do some paid social media ads through TikTok, Instagram, iHeartRadio, Spotify, you name it, we did it. We also have a YouTube commercial that's live. So we had a number of ways we were trying to reach people through paid media. We did organic posts too, through the Clackamas County Instagram, but that's where those 2.4 million impressions come from and 15,500 clicks. So those are click-throughs, people coming to our website and trying to take action. We're really proud of that. We saw an uptick in the Clackamas County web traffic, so not only on our Clack Go Prepared website, but also on our disaster management site. As this campaign wraps up, I'll be able to give better metrics on that, but we have seen an increase in, in folks visiting the website. And then public alerts have doubled in the same timeframe. So we've compared year-over-year data both from '23 and '24 to '25 when this campaign is active. And we've doubled our numbers, which is exactly what we want. And again, as this wraps up, I'll have more information about, you know, exactly city-to-city, where that, where folks are signing up, so where we're seeing the most traction. Oh, and here's a cute little video from our social media. All right, so looking ahead, we plan to repeat this campaign every year. One of the things that was important to us was to keep this messaging versatile and flexible to use it year after year. So we'll do this again next spring, leading up to fire season specifically. We would like to have some messaging, or wanted to have some messaging that spoke to a wider variety of incidents as well. So you'll see through our social media, we have a hazmat message. We have a message about recreating and being prepared if you go out to recreate. So it's not just wildfire, but you know, that does capture the attention of our community members. We're also currently working on an interactive mapping tool. So those maps that you saw earlier are great to print and put in a go-kit. But people like to kind of look through their neighborhood in an interactive way. And so we'll have something that's more flexible on our website. We're working with our GIS team on that right now. And then finally, the information that we gathered from the phases of community engagement and outreach, while it helped us with this campaign to learn how people would like to be communicated with, I think that we'll learn a lot from that data as we continue to think about it over the coming year. And we'll be able to highlight ways that we can kind of change our message year-over-year. That's it for me. Anything you'd like to add?
Anyone have any? Well, thank you very much for the presentation. I was, it is, it can be overwhelming preparing for the emergencies. And so just to clarify, Clack Go program, this is really does, because we talk a lot about emergency preparedness, but it's like being ready in your home, like stockpiling, you know? Also, we do a lot of the seven-day with everyone.
We have videos.
We, we made videos.
Yep, yep.
But it's not, no one's leaving, everyone's staying.
Yeah, yeah.
So this though is, so you have to do both. You gotta be ready to leave and ready to stay.
Unfortunately, yes, you have to do both. So this was focused more on, if you have to leave your home, yes, what would you take with you? Yeah.
Well, maybe your family, depending, depends.
Depends on your dick.
I wanted to, so the emergency routes, I mean, obviously, you're, if you gotta get out of Dodge, you know, you're gonna, you know, get out of Dodge. What do the routes, do they mean something for the city? Like, do we do something different on the emergency routes or, I mean, do they, the, the clear, you know?
Is it 20 miles or 25 miles?
These are, these ones are.
These are all arterials, they're all arterials.
We'll let you figure that out. But yes, our, the, the, the purpose of the routes is really for community members to understand where they live and the ways in and out of their neighborhoods. So a lot of folks have said, I only go one way in or one way, you know, and I don't really explore. So that, that map is to help folks actually take a look at ways that they can get in and out of their community.
I think similarly, people who are tourists here, maybe staying in an Airbnb, might not know their area. So something I didn't mention, working with short-term rentals to get these maps available to them. So if you don't live here, again, giving context to where you are.
So I don't think it would change how we manage the streets on a daily basis, but it might affect what we do in the event of an emergency in terms of how we manage traffic. And actually, one of the questions I have for the county is I know that in a lot of the wildfires in California, they reverse direction on, on limited access routes. They let people use both lanes or both sides of the freeway to get out. Is that also part of your planning process?
So I, I'll say, for this portion of the project, we're really focused on getting evacuation planning maps done.
Just getting the routes identified.
Yeah, the next thing I'll embark on is evacuation planning at large.
Right. So I think that would be our question during an emergency, is whether we would allow folks to use the whole road as opposed to just their side of the road.
Hmm, hmm, mm-hmm, okay.
Yeah, and I'll say, when there's an evacuation, for whatever reason, we are working very closely with law enforcement as well as fire to make that determination of what the hazard is, what is the correct action for the public to take? What is that size of the area? But then those maps help people take the direction that we're giving them with the incident information.
And a huge shout-out to your Fire Department for their participation in this work and your, your staff. They've been fantastic at vetting these maps.
Thank you, Counselor Verdic.
Yeah, I just, and I know you're not there yet, so I think this is actually maybe more of a message to our local. It's just, I've had to evacuate a hurricane and it was so bad and we couldn't move because traffic was so bad, we went back to our house. So I guess that's one of my concerns, is just really make sure that we are planning at a, a city level for, and it's hard because you don't know which way it's, you know, if it's a fire, you don't know which way it's going to come. If it's an earthquake, you might not know what. But this, that we're kind of planning those different scenarios so that we can keep traffic flowing and we don't have those, just the traffic backups. And I know that's hard to do, but that's my two cents.
Yeah, and I could add, for our lessons learned out of 2020 were around, well, that year was very difficult in that there were so many fires happening that we had to do a lot of go-now level threes at the same time. But we have worked a lot with our fire-in-law folks, talking about really right-sizing that go-now level three and giving time before we actually do the level two or level one add-ons to say, get ready and then be prepared. So that allows that time for the folks that are in that three to get out before we add on those other layers.
Yeah, that, that, the, the pre-planning is huge. I mean, trying to get that ready, set, go, out to everyone is, is a key. And every, every single disaster is different, right? So we have a little bit of difference because we have the water. So when the flooding comes, our routes are going to change when we do have the flooding. We can't go across some of the bridges and that might be the main route out. Well, if you have a wildland fire, we might be going down to those bridges to get across. So that, it changes on every single one, mudslides, whatever it may be, windstorms. I mean, it all, it changes. So it's hard to, Mike, I had to have the map for every single incident.
It'd be flexible.
Yeah, definitely.
Are, are you all going to be at the emergency preparedness fair?
Yes.
Oh, that's great, okay. Well, thank you, welcome, for having you there. And then, so Battalion Chief, now you have a presentation, separate presentation.
Yes, separate.
Wildfire-related.
Perfect, so thank you. This segues right into it on some of the preparation that we do here in the city. I wanted to give you some information about how the, the program works. So a lot of people, they don't understand on how the process is, how it happens behind the doors. And so if there was an emergency, so we'll talk about wildland fires because kind of the, the product we're talking about here is, a fire does start and it only continues on growing. So we have our local resources, our four fire stations, that we go out and we try to stop this fire from progressing. But once this fire continues on growing, we're not able to stop it. We need to ask for our mutual aid. So mutual aid is the agencies who have a pre-agreement with us. So Twolton Valley Fire and Rescue, Portland, and also Clackamas Fire District One, they are mutual aid. So if a fire begins, they come out and help us out. Well, if it goes past that where we can utilize, we need to utilize more resources, then we do what is called expanded mutual aid. So we reach out even further out into the agencies around us. We'll talk about Molalla, we'll talk about Forest Grove. We can reach out, well, as we know, fires usually, when they get going, they're hard to stop because of the mother nature. So as that continues on, then that's when we go to a state of an emergency. So statewide mutual aid, that's when our. state of an emergency. So statewide mutual aid, that's when our, our local fire chief, assistant fire chief notifies the fire defense board. The fire defense board then notifies the Oregon State Fire Marshal, state fire marshal, and then they go to the governor and ask for a conflagration. At that point in time, we deem that it's large enough where we have a conflagration. Then we start getting resources all across Oregon. Well, guess what? Fires continue on growing, and so does the resources that we need. I'll show you in another slide some of the reasons on why. But then we reach out to what is called EMAC. It's the Emergency Management Assistant Compact, and that's whenever we utilize other states. We did that in January, myself and the task force from Clackamas County. We were asked to go down to California, and we were down there for two weeks. So that's how the EMAC works. Now, funding, everyone always is like, how is this funded? Well, that comes from when the, when you go to a conflagration, that conflagration is paid for by the state. So that's how we get reimbursed for all of our services that we have. And also, when we go down to other states or help out. All right, so here's where it really hits. A lot of people wonder, why are these fires starting? Well, 70% of the fires that we have start because of us, people. That's either one, someone's in the backyard burning they weren't exposed to, they had a brush fire takeoff. Yesterday and today, we actually had someone in our local areas who were mowing the lawn with a tractor, and it sparked a fire, and it started burning multiple acres. It happens. It happens all the time. People driving down with trailers, the trailer chains hit the ground, spark and start a fire. What about the other 30%? You might ask. The other 30% that is usually caused by lightning fires, and also in the last couple of years, we learned that power lines, power lines also do cause. So we have a windstorm, a tree branch goes down to the power line, that power line catches a branch on fire, falls to the ground, and then we start a fire from electrical. Why is this important? I think this is one of the most important things that we need to realize, that fires, when they are on the ground, our firefighters can, we can make a good stop. We can get the fire to not continue on burning. The problem is, whenever you can see in the picture here, it's whenever those fires start to go up, the ladder fuels. Ladder fuels are what climbs up branches and trees and gets up into the canopy. Well, imagine if a fire's on the ground, it's only two to three, four feet flame lengths, right? The wind's blowing, and it's just gonna stay on the ground. Once it gets up in the canopy, I've been on fires where the embers actually fly more than two miles away and start fires wherever those little embers land. So it's important that we try to continue on educating everyone of why these houses burn. So here's a great picture. So it's a misconception. A lot of people think that this big giant fire front, the big wall of fire that comes and burns all these places down, it's not the fact. The fact is, 90% of homes are burned down because of these small little embers that go up in the air, transport those all the way across the land, and they fall into little crevices that catch on fire. And then that's why these homes catch on fire. So it's important for us to do some, what we call, home mitigation. Home mitigation is what you'll see here, is on your right, you see a home that's prepared quite well, and then the one on the left, you can see a deck is on fire. One of the things that we need to realize is, and this is also down in California, is that if I have one structure, just one house that's on fire, it takes 22 firefighters to go put out this one structure fire. 22. So let's exponentially think about this. When a fire comes through and it stays on the ground, if I can keep it from that structure, I can utilize more resources to put across the land. But if I have a structure that's on fire, I have to decide if I'm gonna put this house fire out and try to stop just this one with 22 personnel. Now, if I have 10 homes, that's 220 firefighters. How many firefighters do we have in this local area? We don't have 220 firefighters that are gonna respond right this, right now. So we have to be educated about why this is so important for all of us to work together. When we work together, we wanna like, take a look at our, our home mitigation. So the zero to five feet, if I can go out, all these numbers, we have zero to five, five to 30, 30 to 100, I look at the zero to, the zero to five. If I can have someone keep fuel from burning that's zero to five feet from your house, I can save your home. I can have a firefighter stop by one apparatus, put out that small little fire, that bush, the bark dust, before it gets to your siding and goes into your house, and then they bump to the next house. They continue on going. If that house catches on fire, like I said before, I need 22 personnel. Or unfortunately, I'm gonna have to make that decision that I can't send all these resources on this one house. I'm gonna now have to go down the road further and try to make a stop on these structures. So being prepared, this is one of the things that we here in the city have taken a huge step towards, home assessments. Anyone can have a home assessment, it's free. The fire department will stop by, we'll do a 360 around your structure and take a look at what could catch on fire. We talk about anything about furniture, the decks, gutters, screens, bushes around the structure, you know, the material that's next to your house. All these things are, when we go around, we will recommend that someone remove these things. A lot of times, it's overwhelming. People are like overwhelmed by what they have to do. But I always tell them, it's like, it's like everything else. It's like, if you're gonna eat an elephant, you eat one bite at a time. Take one, one, one incident, one thing away from your house that's gonna catch on fire, your survivability of that home's gonna increase. So it just takes a little bit. There's a FireWise program, which was put on by National Fire Protection Association. It's a great program. This is ran by homeowners, not the fire department, will help them get started, but they run this. They do this on their own, and it gets the community. Because if I don't take care of my house, and my neighbor does all this work, and my house catches on fire, what good is it? Right? So it does take a plan. So like we just got done saying with Emily and Jamie, is we need to be ready. Ready, set, go. If we're prepared now, we're gonna be so much more well-prepared. When I was in California, there was a firefighter who his house burnt down. He came to me and goes, you're not gonna believe this. I'm a firefighter. I'm like, what? And he goes, I wasn't ready. I do this for a living, and I was not ready for this. So it happens to all of us. So we just need to all prepare. How do we do that? A lot of things we already talked about on social media, the social media, Facebook, Instagram, Pulse Point. If I can put out one app that I would say I'd recommend everybody to have, is WatchDuty. WatchDuty is a great app that will give you information about evacuation routes, the ready, set, go, about where the fire is, where it's moving, and even shows you some of the wind direction of these fires. So you can prepare way in advance before the announcements come out. Emergency Alert, the emergency alert system, very important. We put this on most, all of our flyers that we hand out, that we try to get everybody to sign up for, because this is definitely the one way that people are attached to their phones, and it's gonna give them that notification. So here's a couple pictures that I have that we, we talked about history. History repeats itself, right? And so in 2018, the Camp Fire in Paradise, California. Take a look at this picture. What do you see standing? You see trees. So is it the trees that catch the houses on fires? Is it the trees and the vegetation that burn these homes? No, it's the homes. It's the homes that catch on fire, and they burn the other homes. Fast forward to January of this year, when I was down in Palisades Fire, California, this is a picture that I took, which I was dumbfounded because most of these homes, they're gone, but there's still vegetation. The homes that were standing, when I drove around, they had a defensible, defensible space. They didn't have the wicker chairs and all that on their decks. They were able to go in before the fire front comes, and they got their house prepared. So it's really important that we all work together, educate one another of what's going on and how homes burn down. So when I leave, when I, I walk away from this, this table, I challenge each and every one of you. I challenge everybody to go home and do one thing. Not a bunch of things, just one thing, to make yourself, your house be savable, and protect yourself and the community that you live in. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, that's an interesting thought, because the wildfire, I mean, it started in the vegetation, it started in the trees, but then when they spread to these residential areas.
It's the embers.
The embers.
Yeah.
Because we hear that a lot from folks concerned about the trees as, as the, as the problem, if you will.
Correct. I've gone around on these home inspections, the 360s, and, and they all say, I need to go and tell everybody, mow all the trees down, cut all the trees down. It's like, oh, no. If you trim up the trees, so we can keep the fire on the ground, then we don't have to worry about the trees. We can keep it on the ground, and it's not gonna continue. And the structures, if we can keep the structures from catching on fire, we don't have to worry about these embers flying for miles away.
That's important. That's the first time I've, I've heard that. That's great. Okay, thank you. Council Winland, please go ahead.
Thanks for the presentation. It's fabulous. And I'm excited about the next steps. You've got a lot of work ahead of you to inform all of us. A couple things. So this is Clackamas County. How do we react because we're metro? So we have three counties all working together. I mean, is there, I guess, you provided a few things to look at, like the WatchDuty app, but is there something that when people get in their cars, and they're all listening to their radios, is there going to be like a channel that everyone should go to? Or is there a, to get information to say, oh, my gosh? Because usually, what happens is, and what I've observed in evacuations, like the hurricane part, is that tons of people get in line, they're all going, and then they have no more information or, and they wanna be informed, but they don't know if they're going the right direction. Obviously, if you go with the stream, that's the best way to do it. But is there some sort of a coordinated effort in metro?
Yeah, so I would say, when we're, when we're first doing a go-now evacuation, there's some lag time between like information catching up. So you're trying to get folks out, but then we're getting information on our website, we're getting information, the county is, for wildfires. And we'll work with the city. If it's something happening in the city, you'd likely be putting stuff on your website, getting information there. But we would be telling folks where there's shelters opening, where they can go. If they're, if they've evacuated and they need assistance, we'll have some resource and assistance set up for them. And we do work across the county lines. We have, we are very closely with emergency management in City of Portland and Loma County, Washington County.
Okay. I, I'm just trying to figure out, when people are panicked, the last thing they're gonna do is try to figure out what a website is. And I, you know, they may not even have their phones. I, they may have the radio in their car. I'm just trying to figure out what the overall plan for citizens would be. If there's a big emergency and we've got, you know, we have rivers in town, so it's gonna be bridges are going to be an obstacle, and it says, stay on the west side of the river, you're in better shape. So how do we get that message out? Or if you need to go to the east side, I don't know, things like that, that people need.
They have flash alerts that go on radios. So you know, maybe you're watching TV, they have those alerts that go off also that notify people. So you'll have it through, you know, the social media, your cell phone, and then also the other radio.
Okay.
Yeah, so we work closely with LoCom, the dispatch center for Leguswego as well. So they have access to send the public alert notifications out. So I think that's really the main place where we're gonna try to push information. And then, like I said, it will catch up on like the websites and more information coming. But those, we have templates that have the websites and links of where to get information in those that go out. And like you said, the, the public, they'll integrated alert and warning system, the wireless emergency alerts, and the EAS system, we have access to send those out too. So.
Okay.
Lots of avenues.
And that's why it's so important to sign up for this, because then that'll go directly to your phone, and everybody, nobody leaves their phone.
Right. It's attached to their, right.
Yeah, it's attached to your head, in your head.
So the other part, and more importantly, because when you hit the tree thing, because I'm on a tree committee, and I just wanna, I think it would be helpful to have guidance from you to say what we should have for a criteria for a house. And so that, I don't wanna get into long discussions with committee members going, well, I read that, you know, you have to take down all the trees. And then I read, no, the trees don't start. And then you could burn up three meetings going through that dialogue. If we could get some sort of a, I don't know, guidance from, just to help maybe shape policy when we're talking about what should or shouldn't be, if it's five feet away, or if it's 10 feet away.
Yeah, so FireWise has a really good program that's out there that actually gives you all the numbers. So I mean, we could go through all of the numbers, but it's 10 feet away from roofs and gutters. You want more than, you know, one-third the height of the fuel that's below it. So there's, there's a lot of numbers that are really good information that we can get to you.
Okay. I'm just wondering if we, I think it would help, be helpful to have, incorporate that within that.
Just to go here, let me, just, I mean, I assume FireWise considerations are part of what we're gonna be doing with the tree code. Yes.
Good, good.
Yeah, it's a good point.
So much. Thank you, Council Winland. Counselor Afkan.
Thank you very much for the information. Very informative. I also want you to know, whoever I see, I say, hello, my name is Ali Afkan. Have you signed up for this? And this is what we've been using. Megan, yes. So I think we're doing a great job educating people. So I know that a year and a half ago, we went through the same process at our house, and we said, okay, the city says you need to have all of this, and we bought these packages from Amazon and saved them under the stairs. So we're ready to go. And then we get another list that says, well, if you're going, you gotta have this. And it started getting overwhelming. So we said, we're not gonna pick and choose, we're just gonna take everything under the stairs, shove it into the car, and we go. Now, imagine, similar to Palisades Fire, you get the go command, and you have to go. And I think I'm the third counselor who brings this up. What happens at that point? I'm not going to start looking at app. Probably my wife is gonna be looking at the app and doing this. We, we were actually driving up when Ashland area was in fire, and for some lucky reason, she had two iPads and a phone, and I was driving, and we're going around the fire and got through. But when you say, go to 40,000 people, that's a different story. And I remember seeing the news that cars are abandoned, and bulldozers had to come and open up the lanes for the fire engine to come through. So we're doing a great job, thank you so much, for educating people, getting them prepped, ready to go. But my anxiety is right now, is when everybody goes, what happens? And is this going to happen to us, just like what happened in California? And if so, who, and I don't know the agency was supposed to be working on this, who's going to work on making sure that bottleneck doesn't exist for us when it happens? So I, you may not have the answer, but at least I wanna put it on the table that my fear is that when you say go, everyone is prepared, we're going, and then.
So that is an issue. Let me just be clear. That is an issue.
That is an issue.
If all 41,000 people in LO get in their cars and try to get on Stafford Road at the same time, it doesn't matter whether there's an emergency or not. If that happens, you're gonna be stuck in traffic for a while. We do, however, practice our plan. And we have practiced our plan with folks who've dealt with similar situations. We had some experts from the Malibu Fire from a few years ago help us. They had the exact same issue. All of their people left at the same time on constrained roadways. And I do think it's really helpful to hear from the county that they've thought about that too, and that they're gonna phase notifications. So they're not gonna tell all 41,000 of us to go at the same time. They're gonna tell the ones of us who need to go, to go. And then they'll let the rest of us know. I will also say that the other thing we practice is we practice, where are we gonna send, where are we gonna send people's horses? Where are we gonna send people's goats and chickens? We practice not only, where are we gonna send the people, but where are we gonna send all the other things that are part of people's lives? If we have a disaster of the scale of the, of the fire that they had in California, it will be challenging. It will be challenging.
It will be challenging, but I think you also, I know you're part of the emergency response team. I know that, and I know all the chiefs are. There are some things that we may be able to do, like before we announce this group of people need to leave, maybe there are things we can do to make sure that the roads are ready for them to take off. Things like that. We're not going to be able to.
Absolutely. We won't send people down a road that we know is blocked for Absolutely. We won't send people down a road that we know is blocked, for example.
Excellent.
Well, I think and I think Chief Barnum talked about that a little bit, like if we know a bridge is out, we're not going to send people on that road. So I hear you. But let me say again, if all 41,000 of us get in our cars at exactly the same time and try to use the same road, we're going to be, it's going to take a while. No different than if you leave a football game in Austin Stadium or if you go to Edgefield for a concert. I mean, I actually think we all experience these kinds of emergencies all the time in our real lives, and we need to think about what do you need to be able to do to to make sure you can get through that situation?
Yeah.
But don't go back to, if we evacuate you for fire, don't go back to your house. Counselor Verdick, please.
And leave early.
And leave.
Well, this, thank you all again for the the presentations and information. And this is, I mean, good information for us to have. I think the appreciate the the city really working to get out. I mean, at every event, you know, we've had, we've been giving out these cards. Great. I mean, they're at the meet all the meetings. As you know, we just this year started the Community Health and Resiliency Advisory Board, and that group is half focused on emergency management and working to connect, you know, this information with with neighborhood associations and through those neighborhood associations, really work to get out to that home by home. Because we see that, I mean, there's still some, I mean, a lot of people have signed up, but there's still so many people who have not signed up. And, you know, that's it comes down to household by household preparation. And, you know, we're all fighting for the attention of everyone. It's a challenge. So really appreciate all that you all are doing and the county and the fire department to keep this top of mind for folks and to work with the community to spread the word. So thank you, and thanks for coming to the fair later this month.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. You guys okay now? Keep going.
Yeah, I'm okay.
Yeah, yeah, go to keep going. Okay. Okay, next item on the agenda is the Housing Production Strategy Implementation Policy. I have Eric Olson, our Long Range Planning Manager. Talk to us about the implementation. Mr. Olson, how are you doing? Good to see you.
Good evening, Mayor Buck, and meeting City Councilor, or good evening, City Councilors. Here tonight to give you a little bit of an update on the implementation of the Housing Production Strategy. Of course, this relates to multiple council initiatives that are currently, you know, being undertaken for 2025. Directly, you know, begin implementation of the near term strategies in the Housing Production Strategy Report. Very, very specifically what this has to deal with, as well as the initiative to begin a comprehensive review of the Development Code to find barriers to housing and economic development. So we're looking for some direction on the initial work plans for implementing these near term strategies. So, you know, this is going to be a six year long, actually, an eight year long cycle for for this. But, you know, we are just, we can only do so much at once. So we're just looking at the things that we identified to start in 2025 today. The presentation is about 15 slides, so I just wanted to give you a heads up, and I'll move quickly because a lot of this will be review. So this is definitely review for you all. You know, we are, of course, talking about state requirements pursuant to House Bill 2003 that are related to, you know, generally speaking, Oregon's statewide planning goal number 10, essentially to provide housing at sufficient income ranges and different options for people to actually meet the needs of Oregonians more broadly. So this was enacted in 2019. And of course, as recently as 2023, we here in La Causa, we go adopted our Housing Needs Analysis in October of that year. Of course, that was intended to analyze what housing is needed for current and future residents. We then in October, November, rather, of last year, adopted our Housing Production Strategy, which we were required to do roughly within one year of adopting that HNA. Of course, the Housing Production Strategy includes a number of strategies that are designed to produce the type of housing that we determined that we needed in the HNA. Includes policies, actions, and implementation steps that are meant to encourage the production of that needed housing. So even though this was adopted by you all in November of last year, it, of course, needed to be approved by the state. So, you know, once it was submitted, there was a review period. It was sent out for statewide comment. After all that had been conducted, we finally in April of this year got our letter back from the state indicating that it was approved by the state as well. So I guess a little bit of a congratulations for us there. But, you know, there were some conditions that were included in in that sort of letter of approval from the state. So I'll just really briefly touch on those as we move through the presentation. Before I do that, though, I would mention there were two conditions that were included in this approval letter from DLCD or the Department of Land Conservation and Development at the state level that were really related to the midpoint report. As you may recall, after three years, we are required to submit to DLCD kind of, you know, a report on how things are going and how implementation has been conducted here in the city and what type of progress we're making. So really, you know, I won't get into too much detail there, but conditions one and five are really just about, you know, we have to provide annual summaries. So at a three year point, we provide them with three annual summaries, as well as we have to sort of respond specifically to how we've progressed with respect to the sort of sections within the HPS related to consideration, recommendations, and implementation actions. So just a little bit of direction from the state on what to put in that midpoint report, since we don't have a ton of direction from them on that specific subject yet. And conditions two to four, I will touch on later in this presentation. So this slide shows the implementation timeline that's included in the Housing Production Strategy that was adopted last year. As you can see, we're obviously in 2025, so we're going to focus primarily on Strategies 1, 3, 7, 8, 9, 10, and 13. Also, we'll touch base on things that we've already completed, because it's always good to take credit for things that we have are already done here. So with respect to strategy number one in our Housing Production Strategy, which is the Code Audit and Amendments, as you likely recall, the idea here is to conduct a comprehensive review, an update of our code, specifically to look at barriers to housing production as well as economic development. We are beginning that this year and intend to complete that by the end of 2027 per that timeline. What we, just in terms of an update for you all, we have applied for a Metro 2040 Planning and Development Grant as of the, you know, third quarter of the cycle. It's now a quarterly cycle, no longer a yearly cycle. But that's the same grant that we applied for with the Foothills Project as well. So we have sort of put in that request. If everything goes well and we do receive that grant, which we will know about in the coming months, I think either late September, early October is when we intend to find out about the decision here. But, you know, if everything goes well, we would issue an RFP in a few months here, still in the fall. It's as quickly as we can, really, and then attempt to get the project kicked off by early 2026. So, you know, just a few things on on this particular strategy that I wanted to mention is that there have been a lot of recent pieces of legislation at the state level that are directly related to addressing barriers specifically to middle housing, for the most part, in HB 2138. But of course, there are some other sort of land use related changes that get at similar kind of potential sort of zoning changes that will be necessary for compliance with these state regulations. This is all going to overlap a lot with what we might discuss through this Code Audit and Amendments process. So really, you know, the biggest thing here is to make sure that everything is as coordinated as possible. You will be hearing more about HB 2138 and SB 1537 in the coming months. But, you know, essentially, we had to apply for these grants before we knew exactly what the guidance is from the state on particularly HB 2138, which they still haven't necessarily provided yet. So we're still kind of waiting for a little bit more detail, even though the law has been passed. But this is something that is going to overlap with this work, so we'll have to make sure that everything is coordinated. And just would also mention that we're not just looking at barriers to housing with this particular project. We're looking also at barriers to business and economic development. So it's a pretty, pretty large kind of undertaking here. And we began to scope that and intend to, you know, these are multi year projects we're talking about here. So as big of an effort as it was to even get the HPS passed, it will likely be a similar or, you know, even more of an effort to get sort of this through by the end of 2027. All right, and this is an easy one. Reduce or remove minimum parking requirements. We've actually completed this strategy. We adopted in December of last year amendments to the Comprehensive Plan and Community Development Code to comply with the community, or I'm sorry, the Climate Friendly Equitable Communities Rules for Parking Reform, or CFAC. And we did so by removing minimum parking requirements citywide. So check this box off our list. Just feels good to just kind of take credit for something instead of just talking about multi year projects that we're about to undergo. Speaking of multi year projects that we are about to get started with, the Rezoland Strategy is strategy number three in the HPS. Generally speaking, we intend to, you know, obviously initiate that this year, but the goal is to complete that by the end of 2028. You know, we received direction from you all, and it's in the HPS that we'll focus on non residentially zoned properties. Those kind of considered to be the first phase, but it's really what we're focusing on for the the time being. And to focus on ways to better enable housing production within those areas, specifically multifamily housing. So we are actually applying for a DLCD Planning Assistance Grant for this particular strategy. This is something that actually was included in DLCD's conditions or in their letter of approval, rather. They encouraged us to apply for this grant, so I'm hoping that improves our chances. But this is a two year cycle grant that we have, again, already applied for in early August when we were in, when we were required to do so. So we're optimistic again about this. Project kickoff, if everything goes well, would start early next year. What we're intending for this project is actually to, and we still have options here, but to utilize a DLCD appointed consultant. So this is actually somebody that would be retained by DLCD to basically work on these types of projects for cities throughout the state. This would sort of prevent us from needing to do an RFP process of our own, to go out and solicit sort of our own consultant, but would be a very similar pool of consultants that we've utilized here for projects in the past. So a lot of, you know, firms that we are familiar with, that we know do this work, that respond to RFPs when we do put them out, are on the sort of roster that DLCD has assembled for this work. So we did indicate when we submitted for this grant that that would be our preference here, just for sort of to simplify the process and to, you know, I guess the idea is also to utilize consultants as efficiently as possible. There are a ton of new state requirements and a ton of work that's happening at the state, just throughout the state, related to compliance with the many different pieces of legislation that have been being passed. So we're starting to get a little bit concerned that if we put out an RFP, then maybe all of the consultants are just going to be on the DLCD roster and kind of taking up, you know, that could be taking up a lot of their workload. So, you know, we're thinking this would be the most flexible way to go about this, but we think it would be a similar result than if we were to do our own RFP. Still, you know, this is something that we could, you know, change. I think that was something that we did clarify with DLCD is that we could indicate our preference at this point, but we could also kind of change course if we decided to do so. One thing that I would point out is that this was initially conceived as a two phase project, where we would, you know, sort of eventually look at residential zones after looking at these non residential zones. But because of the timing of the grant, which again, DLCD asked us to apply for, we're going to have to adjust the timing a bit. So basically, you know, instead of kind of having everything completed in time to completely account for it in the three year midpoint report, we are proposing to essentially outline some recommendations, more or less, kind of take a citywide look, really, in areas we could focus on, develop a methodology with the help of this consultant, really, is is our idea to have a really sort of streamlined and considered, a thorough methodology to look at the entire city and select areas for focus. Once we have those sort of focus areas identified, do a little bit further work, but essentially we'd have a memo that includes those recommendations by the end of 2026, whereas the actual amendments would probably be adopted by the end of 2027 on this cycle. So there has been a bit of a timing change due to that. This isn't just due to the DLCD grant, but I would just point out that it is sort of, it would be about a year, a little bit, I think, a year later to complete that residential, or I'm sorry, the non residential phase one portion of this, which is really, I think, where we are going to want to focus the most in the first place. So anyway, just kind of a change that it's part of the reason that we're here, counsel.
Can I, Mr. Olson, can I ask you just a couple clarifying questions here, and then Counselor Winland, if I don't ask your question?
Okay.
You can follow on. Okay, just to clarify, drill down just a second. First, on this, the consultant work, if they're selected via this DLCD, via DLCD, once they're selected, do they work with us just as if we had selected them?
That's right.
So just the selection. Okay, okay.
Yeah, and we still are able to, you know, define the scope of the project and, you know, the approval of the grant will still come to city council. There will be a lot of different things that will still run through council, even if we utilize a DLCD rostered consultant.
Okay, and I was always under the impression this 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 residential rezoning is is kind of a surprise to me. I thought we were specifically talking about non residential areas, you know, that were kind of underutilized, that we don't, where we don't even allow housing right now, that we could, like the Southwest Employment Area, that maybe aren't doing. So that's what I, so this, I I don't, and I don't know my, I don't think we were talking about residential.
Could you explain rezoning?
Yeah, that's what we discussed, what we did discuss with you all. You actually told us to rephase the project so that that was something that we did first, that the non residentially zoned properties would be done first within many of your tenures. But the whole time, we did talk about doing both in a two phase process.
But can you explain what residential rezoning is?
Well, we were looking at ways, we'd be looking at ways to add capacity within residential areas. And I just want to point out really what I am proposing here is to sort of de-prioritize that and put that on the back burner.
Well, I think you're very wise to do that.
Out of the kitchen. Yeah, I just think that's going to be, we already have kind of a added capacity via the via the the middle housing code, which is great. I think the complete like rezoning of the underlying base is going to be way, it's just not going to go over. It's not, it's going to be a waste of time. It's not going to pass. It's not going to get through the community. So I think we should just focus on the non residential areas and pull this. So if that's a part of this grant, I think we need to clarify that.
This is not, that's not a part of this grant.
Okay, good, good.
That's why I'm, that's what I'm trying to say here is that I am de-prioritizing that second phase because I anticipated that you all would feel this way. And that, to be honest, you know, I think that would be a very difficult piece of work. And also HB 2138 kind of does a lot of the unlocking of potential capacity within these areas anyway. Everything that we've done with middle housing, I mean, that's how you would do it, right? So.
Okay. Well, so can we just clarify, so how can we, if, how can we just not even venture down that path? How can we just put the lid on it right now? We do not want to go down the path of the.
By doing nothing.
Yeah, I I think that Eric's trying to create a path for you, that by the time you get to that, you'll probably have dealt with your housing capacity on the non residential properties. I don't think there's anything you could do right now to take, you have an adopted housing production strategy that does include it, that's been approved by the state. So I don't think that today you can undo it. What you can do is, I I agree with you that it's going to be a nonstarter in the community. There are some residential zones, though, like the R zero zone, where you could probably do some things to encourage my housing that won't disrupt the universe.
The R zero. It's already the most dense.
Correct, but there's there's stuff. Anyway, all I'm saying is I think this is the best we can do for you at this moment in time. And at the three year midpoint, you won't have done this work yet. And so if we're on the right track and we're already producing the housing without having done it, I think that would be the point at which you might say, yeah, we're not going to do that.
Yeah, and I think that's kind of the idea here is that by the end of 2026, we would know that increment and kind of the moves that we need to make. And, you know, as as Martha pointed out, I think it's extremely reasonable to think that we would make the bulk of our progress with the non residential zonings.
I also just want to echo what Eric said, though. When you see the changes that are in House Bill 2138, we're already going to have some of those conflicts with folks in the community. And so I agree with you that we don't need to borrow trouble, and it's quite possible that with this, we're not going to need to.
Okay, thank you.
That's my intent, at least with this work plan.
That's great. Okay, that sounds great.
Yeah, so again, we we had, though, I just, to be clear, that is what's in the HPS. And I do think, you know, we'll have to sell it to DLCD, but I I think that when we show them the increment, it'll be a good sell, so.
Well, I, to the mayor's point, I don't know if there, if we have to reapply or resubmit future progress reports, but to submit it and take it out. Because I I want everyone to understand what rezoning housing means. It means that if you're a R seven, what is it, R 75? Means it's a 7,500 square foot lot, and they'll say, we're going to do it R two, two, 2,000 square foot lots. And now all of a sudden, you can subdivide your property. And now all of a sudden, you can subdivide your property, whatever, I don't know. Listen, Salem has come up with, to me, some wacky things and some things that are frankly, I mean, taking most of our control out of local hands of how we want our community and telling us how to run our cities. And so, pardon me if we're a little sensitive to this issue, but I think it's, it's fine to give us a goal to increase housing, but to start telling everybody to reevaluate your land and frankly, it's, for many residents here, it's their biggest asset. And for them to have that compromised or possibly compromised just to get a state mandate in, I think we will have upheaval and that's when we will see people with their pitchforks.
There's really, you know, again, I just want to be as clear as possible. We are not proposing that and that is, that is what we are proposing to change. But, you know, that is what was, the direction that was given to me by you all last November was to, you know, adopt a HPS that included that. So I'm trying to propose a more reasonable path forward.
Okay, there was a lot of things in there and, well, surprised all of us here. But I think there is a lot of great opportunity in these non-residential rezoning, for sure. So it's great that we're focusing on that.
And, and again, you know, these are strategies that we came up with as a city. Of course, we are being forced to by the state, but this is something that hopefully we can take a bit of ownership and not just feel like we're getting pushed around by DLCD the whole time.
Well, but I mean, we also had under the, when we made those decisions, we knew, or we, at that point, anyone that had a CCNR outline that said that you can't, you can't do that and we have...
That one move will probably do the bulk of the work within our existing residential zones, right?
Right, but what I'm saying is that's a pretty huge drastic change. And, I mean, there's a lot of people that I think felt protected and could go along with it. And I, for one, made some decisions based on previous parameters. So now they've changed, they're moving the deck chairs with, without telling us and...
That is very true.
I heard they're going to rename the neighborhood clusters on the lake.
Neighborhood clusters, yeah. I wouldn't put it past them.
And that's just one of many things that I know we've spoken about, House Bill 2038, 2138. So I think that's a future night of discussion, but I know there's a lot of us up here who have a lot of concerns about some of...
And that is very much a similar reaction that I had. And I'm hoping to, I'm hoping to sort of thread the needle through this work plan, so.
Starting to sweat here, okay.
Answering to you, but I do have to get this approved by DLCD as well. But yes, I think we can, I think, again, the non-residential zones are where we will make the most impact by far. So I think that will, you know, I think that will get us a long way here.
Good.
Yeah, so again, you know, I don't know if there are any concerns about the sort of roster of consultants that DLCD has. Let us know. You know, I think, again, we, we think that we'll get to a very similar phase or we'll get to a very similar place with the work and the consultant and the type of work that they'll be doing for us. It seems like they're trying to streamline these processes, offering more grants more often for, just kind of to accommodate the fact that they are passing all these things that we have to respond to as a city very quickly. So we're trying to take advantage of that.
Who pays for all these grants? I mean, the taxpayer does, but is it? General fund, hmm, okay, thank you.
And yeah, there's a lot of people from a lot of cities asking for, for as much as possible, for even more if we can.
You've been doing a good job getting the grants. We have, you know, the planning grant for foothills. That's metro grant, but metro money, well, we love, we love...
But you can imagine, you know, somebody, like the city of Malala might have less capacity to respond to state demand. So they're trying to make this as easy as possible for jurisdictions that are, you know, struggling with capacity.
Absolutely.
Why don't they just send out new city charters with all the rules in it? And I guess we could just, sorry.
Okay, we're going to keep moving, we're going to keep moving.
So as I'm sure folks are aware, we are also undertaking a large project to revisit the previous planning effort in the foothills district to sort of take a comprehensive look at this area and come up with a set of recommendations, a new plan that reflects current community values. Of course, part of this project will involve a rezoning of these properties. So this is related to the rezoned land strategy. The extent to which we will unlock residential capacity in this area is to be determined. But, you know, I just wanted to mention it since it is related to this. Consultant contract was finalized, of course, on June 17th by city council earlier today. We appointed members to a community advisory committee for this project. We're in the process of forming a technical advisory committee. We have the public involvement strategy sort of being worked on and being discussed. We had a work session at the planning commission recently on that and we'll talk about that with the CAC at our first meeting. And we are also starting to analyze existing conditions in the neighborhood and just do a lot of sort of technical analysis or early sort of phases of the project. So all this is underway. And I will also mention the foothills district in, or with respect to the tax increment financing strategy because there is some overlap there as well. But yeah, just a reminder, I guess, that the foothills plan does fit into this larger HPS sort of housing production exercise. And yeah, I think that's about it. And I guess I would just also mention that the timeline for foothills doesn't align with the sort of three-year midpoint timing where we want to be able to at least quantify and use some type of methodology to quantify added capacity by the time we submit that report. So this should all align with that schedule.
Can we get the DLCD to pay for the water treatment plant? So it'll help our housing production? Yeah?
Yeah, does the foothills, this red line, is that a kind of a just geograph, like this is what we as a city consider foothills?
That, I think, is, it's not, it's not even honestly exactly contingent with that, but generally speaking, it is. It's a very early, you know, I think this is actually from a previous iteration of the plan, not even sort of this iteration of the plan, a very early idea of what that boundary could be, but the boundary is not set yet. I think we're trying to be as flexible as possible. And so we do have a study area. I would say maybe in the study area would be a little bit bigger than that. We're still talking about that, yeah. And of course, we're talking about that with the project management team. Of course, this is something that, you know, obviously we'll have a little bit of public discussion about too.
And when we withdraw the urban renewal boundary, it may or may not be exactly the same as this boundary either.
I would assume that it would be...
And we'll want to capture some of the assessed value on the other side of the highway.
That's right. And sometimes there's the project boundaries and then there's the urban renewal bound and they're not, okay. And I, Mr. Olson and I, you know, interviewed and put together this, the group that we all appointed tonight, and I think we have a great advisory group, very good group, yeah. So thanks to those folks for volunteering on this. It's a two-year effort too, so. Have a counsel term.
Agree that it seems to be a great group. And also, you know, the public involvement strategy is exciting to look at as well and kind of gives you a piece of, a taste of where we're going with this work. So yeah, it's all coming together and becoming more real. So that's always fun. Unfortunately, I'm not here to talk about foothills. I am here to talk about the HPS, so I will advance, although there is a lot of overlap. The next strategy is strategy number seven in the HPS, and I just wanted to note this. We're actually wanting to begin sort of this larger project to modify SDC fees to tie them more directly to dwelling size. Beginning in 2027 is when we had put that on our timeline in the HPS. Cottage clusters, though, we did make a commitment to revisit the fee schedule for cottage clusters. We're looking at that starting this year, but we'll probably make recommendations for next year's master fee and charges schedule. So that's something that will be coming to you all later this year.
What do we do right now with the clusters?
It's a good question.
Jessica Newman, the community development director. Currently, we don't have a good fit for cottage clusters, so we're charging the, and we're looking specifically at the transportation SDC. We're charging the single-family rate, which is more expensive than the multifamily rate. So we need to find kind of an in-between those, those two. So we're working with our engineering staff to look at coming up with the methodology for determining it and then we will put it in the fee schedule. And then, as Mr. Olson alluded to, later on, we'll do a bigger look at the SDC structure as part of the transportation system plan update.
Right, okay, thank you.
Sorry, I meant, I thought you meant that you wanted to change them right now. Not sure we're ready to do that quite yet, but yeah. All right, so strategy number eight in the HPS is related to the nonprofit low-income housing tax exemption. So this is a tax exemption specifically for affordable housing that's, you know, sort of regulated affordable housing that's available at or below 60% of AMI, but specific for nonprofit developers. This is something, again, that we've completed, so congratulations to us, I guess. And we did this actually very quickly last year in order to make it available to the Mercy Greenbray Development at Merrillhurst Commons. Of course, I would also point out that another development this year, the El Nido development at the Boons Ferry Road staging site is also requesting to take advantage of this tax exemption. So it's something that we're continuing to implement, even though it's...
Didn't we already do that for them?
We did.
We did.
Yeah, so it's already done, but it's recent, I guess, as of this summer. So yeah, it's something that I guess I'm just, my point is that we're continuing to kind of implement this regardless of the fact that we've completed it for the purposes of our overseers at DLCD.
Can you put other limitations besides just the 60% of AMI? As we talked with the, with the metro housing project and the group that's running it, they were concerned about the right type of residence that would fit the community and fit the resources that we have available for assistance.
I think we could put it at below 60% of AMI if we really want to tailor the project, but I don't think that this is available for anything above 60% of AMI exemption.
No, I mean, what I'm...
I think this is too different, yeah.
Oh, you want, yeah.
Okay.
I know what you're talking about. Yes.
But can we put that in our housing policy? That we want to, we want to provide that the...
You want the funds to go towards the...
Meet the requirements, I mean, of a 60%, but have criteria in addition to that?
No, I mean, well, the other thing is the only, the two, I mean, the, all of these were requirements of the metro housing bond. That bond is done, so there are no more projects. So we're just managing what we have. Well, that's what I mean, there's no...
They have future money, there's no future money for anything. So this will be the last project, so we don't really need to do this?
Well, of these requirements...
It's already been done, yeah.
Yes, developers are not doing this of their own volition.
Oh, I know that part.
Yes, you know.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we're...
I believe that there is some capacity for the city to add what we call local criteria to these programs. I think typically upon adoption, but yeah, I'm not sure. So I guess that just, I'm saying that because I'll talk about this other tax exemption that we have also committed to adopt, which is a low-income rental housing tax exemption. Again, it's very similar to the other tax exemption that I just talked about, but it would not just be completely available to nonprofits. It would also be available to for-profit developers that are building housing that meets the sort of income requirements and eligibility requirements that, you know, we, we're putting forth here so that 60% of AMI or less. This is something that we, through the HPS, committed to beginning and completing this year. It's looking like it might push more into early 2026. We want to put together some options for you and bring this to you sometime in the near future. So yeah, that's something that hopefully we will be discussing with you shortly here at city council. But yeah, there's a few sort of implementation actions involved here. But, you know, I think that we could potentially talk about local criteria. And I know that there are some sort of sidebars or, you know, sort of, there's some structure to what we can and cannot include within these tax exemptions and it does get somewhat complicated. So we will have that conversation, I suppose, when we get to that discussion, if that works for counsel.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
All right, and so number 10, the 10th strategy in the HPS is to pursue public-private partnerships for affordable housing. Now, you might recall, this is one of the strategies that we worded fairly broadly and relatively flexibly for ourselves in the HPS. We didn't make any really super committal language. Because this is a really opportunistic exercise, this requires not just action on behalf of the city, this requires a partner in, you know, the private sector. So there really, there's only so much the city alone can do. So that being said, of course, this is one of the strategies where DLCD had provided us with additional conditions of approval. Of course, they want to make that more concrete. So what they have conditioned for the HPS is that it would, basically, we were required to demonstrate in the midpoint report that our city has taken action on at least one of four of our recommendations that we did include in the HPS. We didn't say, yes, we were definitely going to do one of these things. DLCD wants us to definitely do one of those things. So these are donate surplus city-owned land for affordable housing as it becomes available, work with faith-based organizations to utilize excess or underutilized land for affordable housing in a system with zoning permitting and financial incentives, continue to leverage federal state and regional resources, such as the Metro Affordable Housing Bond to fund affordable housing in Lake Oswego. And specific to the TIF strategy, they did encourage us to use TIF funds to support affordable housing partnerships. So that could be with respect to infrastructure deficiencies or contributing funding to affordable housing more directly. That seems like a, you know, that sort of fourth recommendation seems like it might have the most sort of synchronicity with the rest of what we're talking about here, that it would sort of overlap the most with what we're already planning to do elsewhere in the HPS. But of course, this is all kind of contingent on establishing a partnership with some affordable housing developer. So, you know, I think, just wanted to point out that this, they did sort of encourage, or not encourage, they conditioned us. We do have to kind of comply with one of these recommendations in order to show that we're making progress at that midpoint report. I think another thing just on that condition is that DLCD doesn't really require the city to fully adopt or complete any of those recommendations, but they want to ensure that the city moves beyond exploratory intent and that we commit to taking tangible steps for these recommendations. So they indicated that they would accept something like an MOU or a memorandum of understanding, a council resolution or even council direction to staff to initiate this type of work or council approval of an application for or an allocation of funding or that type of action from council. So there are some teeth, but I think that there is some, there are some paths there that might be more, I guess, easier to pursue than others. Some of them might be a lot more challenging. So anyway, there's more detail on what we need to do to show progress with this flexibly worded strategy that we had included in our HPS.
But we've already done the, we've done two of them already. So we don't get credit, we have to do another one on top of that?
That's true.
That's what they're...
We did a list of all the things that we had already done right before we initiated the HPS process so that we, you know, we were trying to take credit for everything that we had done, but of course, we can't take credit for it as part of the HPS because of that.
We did three, actually.
Yeah, but that's, I mean, this is no problem. You know, we, we're going to set up a new TIF and, I mean...
Yeah, I do think that, you know, it's, you know, it is getting a little bit, the DLCD pushing a little bit hard at us kind of a direction. But, you know, I do think that when we do look at the TIF district within the foothills area, that that's a really feasible way to comply with this. That won't require too much difficulty on behalf of the city. That sort of aligns with a lot of other things that we've been thinking about. But yeah, it is absolutely the case that we're, we are not going to be able to take credit for the things that we did before, you know, the HPS was adopted.
Even the zoning one, though, if we do the non-resident, I mean, I really think you're going to comply with this.
That's true.
Yeah, this is easy. I mean, even if a church comes to us and says, hey, we want to, yeah, we're like, all right, great. And then we, and then it overlaps with other benefits we're already providing. I mean, yeah, no big deal. Easy.
Yeah, easy, easy to bristle at this one, but I think we got a path. I think, I think we can do it.
I still want to know if we don't do this, are they going to take our keys away to the city? I mean, I don't.
I, I think this is another one where I'm not positive there is an effective remedy for the state if somehow we fail to do this. So I, I don't, really, I wouldn't high center on this one.
So we can put check on this one?
We're working.
I think it's more of a statement of intent and effort as opposed to actually requiring you to actually do anything. And you're already, I mean, you've already, you're already working on all of these things, so.
And even, you know, there was something, you know, in the, the language that was in the condition for this particular strategy, that, you know, it would just be council direction that would sort of show that we'd made progress on this. So that's a pretty, pretty low bar.
Great.
Not that we don't appreciate direction from you all, and that that means a lot to us. But I guess moving on to the next one, which again is related to the, as we were just describing, the tax increment financing piece here. So the strategy is to use TIF to support affordable housing development. You know, that's something that we had enumerated in the HPS, as something that we would include as a quote-unquote "project" within the forthcoming urban renewal plan for the foothills area. Even that is pretty flexible. You know, it could be a project just that funds go to that particular, you know, for affordable housing, or it could be within that district. You know, I think there's a lot of different ways that this could look. However, you know, there is an expectation that, you know, we will utilize TIF to support affordable housing, and specifically that it will be related to foothills. So just something to consider. Of course, you know, there were a few, I think it was a condition technically from DLCD to just basically clarify the scope of this, whether or not we did just want it to relate to foothills, or if we want to sort of think about TIF elsewhere. I think, you know, the, the quick answer is, we did just intend for it to be, to commit to using it in foothills, but, you know, of course, there is a potential that we could utilize TIF elsewhere within the city, so we don't want to preclude that. So if we do that, we should probably take credit for it from the state as well.
Okay, so can I ask a question with, related to foothills? We asked this group to go out and dream, to figure things out. And what if they dream and they get feedback from our community and everything else that they went, say, like a south waterfront? I'm not saying that's what they're going to do, but let's just say they do that. And that doesn't include really any of this affordable housing part. I mean, are we, are we are automatically making them?
No, no, and I also think that, that actually TIF gives you flexibility to think about affordable housing in an entirely different way than just a project. So for example, you are actually using TIF at North Anchor to create a mixed-income product. And so you may want to think about not like a specific dollar investment, but rather, maybe you create incentives using TIF to try to create. And candidly, I think in the long run, mixed-income projects are going to be much better for the community than standalone buildings.
No, I understand that.
So I don't think this, it doesn't commit us to do anything, but it does commit us to talk about it.
Right.
Okay. I just don't want us to basically tell this committee that you have to find, you have to build affordable housing. I want them to be able to dream and figure out their space, okay.
And we are, you know, bound to, again, consider this within the, and sort of include it as a project that is eligible for TIF funding, but again, I don't think that's means that we need to put affordable housing specifically within the foothills district. But again, incentives could be a great way to do this.
And we might find another place to put it in, Lake Oswego, somebody may come in with another project, whatever.
It doesn't mean that we can't do that either. You know, I think we have flexibility, so.
Thank you. Good question.
All right, and so this is the last one that I will be talking about with you all today. This is fair housing policy and education, something that we recently held a work session or study session, rather, at council regarding fair housing policy. Specifically, the strategy is to amend the comprehensive plan to make affirmatively furthering fair housing and official city policy. But there's also an educational component, sort of, and to take other actions to promote fair housing education. We've already begun that to a degree, but there's a lot more work that we could be doing. One of the potential actions that we identified in the HPS is to conduct an analysis of impediments to fair housing. That's actually going to be required for the next HNA cycle, so DLCD actually told us to hold off on that, to not do that quite yet, just to do it when it's required for the HNA. So there are a lot of other things, though, in terms of education related to fair housing that we intend to actually probably, you know, we, we do intend to start that now, but we did put in the HPS, so that would be completed by the end of 2028. So we got some time on this one. However, we did identify and sort of want to forefront the adoption of a policy to explicitly make a furthering, affirmatively furthering fair housing as official city policy within this year. So that's something that we are going to be discussing next Monday at the Planning Commission. There is, you know, currently, we've noticed this public hearing for such a comprehensive plan amendment. It's something that we discussed at council not too long ago. So that's something on September 8th. So next Monday, again, we'll hold a public hearing at the commission, and at council, you will be considering this on November 4th at a council hearing. So we're, we're on track for this one. If everything goes well, we should be able to complete this by the end of this year. So in terms of next steps, I just mentioned those that are related to the fair housing comprehensive plan amendment, but I'm hoping to bring an agenda item to you all, a council business item most likely, to create the technical advisory committee in the near future. September 16th is a tentative. It would be great if I could bring that to you all on September 16th, but this does take some time to sort of identify these folks and make sure we have the right group, so we don't want to rush that either, but that is what we're targeting for. We are going to be talking a little bit more about the rezone land strategy at the Planning Commission on September 22nd. There are a lot of things happening, and these are just the sort of four next milestones that I want to bring to your attention, but there's going to be a lot more. We're talking about multiple, multi-year projects here, so, you know, this is not the last jewel here of the HPS by any means. So yeah, that, with that, my presentation is done. Thanks.
I'm glad you were here. This is very helpful to come and go through, because, I mean, even as we're seeing, and there's a lot in, in the plan, and really, I'm sure all of us really appreciate you keeping us informed on the steps that we're taking. It's an important topic to the community. It's obviously a goal of the, of the council, and thanks for coming and giving the update.
Yeah, absolutely. You're welcome, and I'm glad that you're on board with my sort of idea with, with regards to that rezone land strategy. I thought I should at least come to you for approval, but I, you know, I, I think that it's clear that you thought it was a good idea, so I appreciate that.
Thank you, thank you. And yeah, don't hesitate. If you run into any, you know, roadblocks or concerns with the process, of course, we don't know the process, we don't know these consultants, so we, we're trusting you.
Absolutely, yeah. Yeah, I will, I will come to you with updates as needed, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Olson. All right. Okay, anyone have any information they'd like to share? No?
If you have not purchased your Wine Walk tickets for the October Wine Walk, sign up with the Chamber. It's going fast. I think there's just a couple hundred tickets left, I think. So make sure you're on it.
October Wine Walk? Counselor.
I just want to do one more shout-out to Neighborhood Night Out. It was really a great event, and with the numbers, I mean, the city staff did a phenomenal job with all the coordination and everything. So shout-out to everyone who helped that happen. It was a lot of fun.
Okay. Ben?
I just have a couple things, and I want to do a big shout-out to Parks and Rec. First of all, highly successful concert season this year, and I hope that you all got to at least one of them, because they were a great time. Although I did hear the ABBA tribute from my back deck, and it was super loud. So I apologize to all my neighbors for the ABBA tribute. It was a lot of fun. I also, if you haven't heard, the city got a grant to extend the Saturday Farmer's Market by three weeks. So the Saturday Farmer's Market in Millennium Plaza Park will go three extra weeks. I cannot tell you who gave us the grant. I don't remember. And then last but not least, also a huge shout-out to the teen lounge, record number of attendance this summer. So providing a place for kids who otherwise would probably be hanging out in their own basements, playing video games to go and be with other teens. So good job, Jordan, good job, Sid. It was a great summer.
I have to say, Martha, whatever the farmer's market is doing, it's working. All my son, who's 13, can talk about every weekend, he's like, hey, can we go to the farmer's market? So, I mean, at 13, I was not doing that. But so it's, it's turning into quite the hangout for the, for that age group, which I think is kudos to, to you and the team for putting it all together and making a fun dynamic for everybody.
Well, the creativity of Park staff is really off the top, off the charts, and so I appreciate them. The food is great, the music is great. Actually, the Young Entrepreneurs Program, where kids who are trying to start a business can come sell their wares, it's really cool. And, you know, for those of us who eat seasonal produce, it's also really awesome to be able to get, yeah.
Doing a great job. Okay. With that, we are going to adjourn the council meeting and call to order the redevelopment agency meeting, and we are going to move into executive session. So we'll ask Ms. Osenak to read the executive session parameters for us, please.
That's right, Chair Buck and members of the Laura Board, you're now going to meet an executive session for the purpose of conducting deliberations with persons designed by the governing body to negotiate real property transactions. You're going to consider information or records that are exempt by law from public inspection. Representatives of the news media and designated staff are allowed to attend the executive session. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on the deliberations during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session is previously announced. No decision may be made in the executive session, and at the end of this executive